In a recent policy committee meeting. And I thought that it would be a good idea if the entire board had the opportunity to look at and discuss the state board's model policy on bullying, harassment, and intimidation prior to the policy committee beginning its work reviewing and revising the Washington County Board of Education policy. So this is really an opportunity for all of us to learn about those two policies, the state policy and our policy, and the process of policymaking in an inclusive way. So I want to thank our chief legal counsel, Mrs. Ram, for being so receptive to the idea and for agreeing to lead us today. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Ram.
Good afternoon, thank you. So just as a high-level overview, we'll talk a little bit about the board's role in setting board policies, just a brief discussion, the difference between policy and regulation. The model policy that came from the state board talks a lot about what has to be in regulations, so just have a little conversation about that. And then we'll dive into the bullying policy and the model policy as well. So I just want to first start by talking a little bit about the school board's role in policy setting. It's really, what is the role? What is the board responsible for? So it's policy development and revision. It's done typically through the policy committee. Policies get referred to the policy committee by way of the liaison to the policy committee, and that would be myself, or by the board making suggestions or recommendations, or by the public coming forward and making a request, just had the policy committee discuss it. The policy committee is charged with doing a complete and thorough review of policies to make certain periodically they are reviewed, to make certain they're current and the correct format. They can draft new policies, revise existing policies, and then also make recommendations of rescission of existing policies that are no longer relevant, or because there's a newer policy that replaces it. So the board can take action to create or modify a policy which imposes requirements beyond those established by law. What the board cannot do, though, is impose requirements less than what the law requires. And that's when we sometimes speak about mandates or other policies that the state board has said we must follow, and we can certainly make them more restrictive but not less restrictive, or more encompassing and not less. And like I said, this is usually done through policy committee, but the board does take action as a whole. The adminis-- well, let's talk a little bit about administrative regulations. So whenever we have a policy, the policy talks about the broad scope of it, but then how we're going to execute it in the day-to-day is really through the regulations. And that is done separately from the board, and we'll talk about that in the next slide. But before we talk about that, so I don't want to dive into how we execute the policies, but really kind of the broad sweeping, we'll have a policy on bullying, for example, or harassment, and how we shouldn't be doing it, but not the day-to-day of how do you report it, how is it investigated? And then, once a policy committee or the board decides to take action, as you know, there's a first reading. If the board approves it at the first reading, we open it up for public comment, and then it goes to second reading. There's usually 10 days, or at least 10 days, between the first reading and the second reading to allow for that public comment, but no more than eight weeks. That's why if there has been more than eight weeks, we bring it back for a first reading, typically not because there's been significant changes, but too much time has passed. We want to make certain still relevant. At the second reading, the board has the option of either accepting it, rejecting it, adopting it with amendments, rescinding it, or sometimes referring it to the appropriate committee for further consideration. Later, I'll talk a bit about how we disseminate these policies, how the public has access to it, how the board has access to it, how we contemporarily suspend. And then I want to take a little bit of time to talk about emergency policy in light of COVID and everything else that's gone on, just as a refresher, because it's not something we do very often. So as I started to talk about policy versus regulation, the policies are, the big difference is the policy is the responsibility of the board, the regulation is the responsibility of the superintendent, where the superintendent and regulation is either a part of a committee or delegates the appropriate responsible individuals to help promulgate that regulation or form it. This district makes up committees of relevant individuals, so those who are essential into the day-to-day option, operations and functions of that regulation, to make certain we're A, in compliance with the law, and B, so it's something that's relevant and pertinent to our school district, because there are times a regulation in our district may look different than another district because of how we handle things, our geographic complexity, the size, the scope, our population. And the big difference also is that a policy is submitted to the full board for approval, a regulation is approved solely by the superintendent. So they really are separate. Board approves big picture, superintendent is involved in the execution of that big picture. Is there any questions on that before I move forward?
I don't think it is anywhere.
It is, it should be. It is. In your packet toward the end, should be the slides.
Say it again.
In your packet, towards the end of the packet, should be the slides. If not, we can get a copy for you.
Thanks.
I should also say, there's--
Go ahead.
I should also note, the policy BG actually sets out the board policies, regulations, and the policy around, as redundant as it sounds, the setting of policies. So I'm just walking you through basically the high-level overview of policy BG. BG goes in a lot more specifics. This is just a refresher. Was there any question about policy versus regulation? Just high-level overview. For the, let's talk a little bit about emergency policies. I want to spend a couple minutes talking about that. The board does have the ability to set emergency policies. It's still full-board action. It doesn't have to follow the first or second reading procedure, but it does still have to follow our board agenda procedures, as well as our board meeting procedures. So it still requires a motion to amend the agenda, as well as, once the vote board votes on that, to amend it, then it gets voted on, like any other action item, and there's discussion and comment. But sometimes that gets confusing for school boards in general, because how often do we do anything with emergency regulations? So I just want to spend a few moments on that, because we do it so infrequently, because a lot of what we do with COVID has been sort of delegated to superintendent because they're operational. So I know in the beginning, there was conversations about mask wearing, and then the state stepped in and issued a mandate, so it took it out of the school district's hands. There had been conversations along the way, this school year, with other proposed actions the boards may or may not take. I've seen other school districts. But again, the state board has stepped in and issued regulations, so the school board has not had to address it. But I know it's not something we talk about often. So if there isn't any other questions on policy BG, I think we should move into the model policy and talking about bullying and harassment policy. Seven dash four point two four point one, the education article of annotated code of Maryland outlines the requirements. I will not read the law to you, I promise. But by March 31st of 2009, the state required that the state board of education develop a model policy, and there are requirements of what needs to go into model policy. Our current policy does meet the requirements of what needs to be in a policy, but there's been right, there's been suggested language changes. And that's what you have before you with the model policy, which is also in your packet. It has to be updated every five years, and when the state board updates the model policy every five years, the district in turn, the year after, every five years, has to update their policy in accordance with that. The biggest change is this year is the definition section. There weren't any laws that required a change. There was really a lot of conversation at the state with a lot of stakeholders about what does the policy mean, how can it be applicable to schools? A significant part of the definition section really was very technical jargon from the education code, as well as from the criminal statutes, and really, while it's what the law says, it's not really user-friendly, and this is my opinion, it wasn't really user-friendly to how do parents navigate this, how do schools navigate this. The forms show one thing, how do we apply the information that we receive? So there's changes to the definition section that put it more in kind of plain speak, more common terms. And it's consistent with the changing times. There was changes about cyberbullying and methods and modes of communication. Another big change is it applies not just to students and staff, but to visitors, basically parents, people who are at student, at school activities or events. And it will also require updates to the regulation. So in your packet, you should have a copy of policy J F H with some blue writing on it. For those who have not been involved in the policy committee, when we do a proposed changes, the language in black is our current language, and in blue, or using strikeout, we demonstrate what we're looking to change. What's in blue here is based upon the regulation or the proposed model that came out from the state superintendent. And that's where it starts to broaden the definition, put it more into plain speak. I don't have a slide on this, because there's a lot of words. So you have to hand out in your packet, and I can either walk through it, or I can answer questions. I don't, I'll leave it up to you how you want to walk through this. Anyone? If there's any questions, you want to walk through anything?
Has everyone had the opportunity, first of all, to read the model policy?
Yes.
No questions about the model policy?
I couldn't hear, so that's why I didn't speak up.
Yeah. Are you talking about MSDEs?
I have questions.
Okay, so we have MSDEs, but what I have in front of you, is my mic loud enough?
Yeah.
Okay. If I lean closer, does that help?
That's so much nicer.
Okay, I will lean into the mic. Yes. Is that even better?
Yep.
Apparently, my inner prosecutor voice is just not loud enough today. I apologize for that. So it's policy J F H, it's in our format. There should be blue writing on it, as well as the black. That's in your packet. That is the proposal that I will be bringing forward to the policy committee for discussion, and I have before all of you to demonstrate and show you what the proposed changes look like in comparison to what our existing language is. Has everyone had an opportunity to read and review that?
And Elisa, you're saying that the blue language is pretty much matching the state language? Okay.
Correct. I reviewed the state's proposal and didn't, and while we don't have to follow it exactly, these are suggested changes, that we, it made sense to broaden it, and a lot of other districts are using the same language, so consistency is key across districts. So yes, so it models it identically. And certainly, usually in policy committee, when there's model language, if it's not a required language, we do have discussions about either grammar, or like dress code, for example, and we had that conversation, sometimes changes in word choices. So nothing says we have to stick to this exactly, as long as we follow the spirit of it, not the identical words to it.
I have some questions about the state model policy.
Okay.
Okay. So I'll start on page three, I'm sorry, page five, under number five, standard consequences and remedial actions. Just so I understand these things. Number, Roman numeral I, or one there, says, "Avoid using exclusionary discipline measures when addressing bullying behavior, and should only be used after all other available and appropriate behavioral interventions have been exhausted," and goes on and on and on. What would be the standards for evaluating when you switch from one thing to the other? You say, "These rehabilitative methods haven't worked, so now we have to crack the whip, so to speak, and perhaps suspension and stuff." What would be the standards for deciding when to switch gears on that? Does that make sense, what I'm saying?
It does make sense. I'll start with sort of a legal answer, and then I'll ask a colleague to talk more on the school setting, explain it a little more fully. From a legal standpoint, we have to follow what's considered the least restrictive procedure, what's the least exclusionary. Exclusionary from a classroom or school is a last resort, and schools have to evaluate under what we're allowed to do under the law, and what steps we can take. In terms of how we evaluate in Washington County, I have Mr. Jacoby here to be able to explain that to you.
Right.
So we have a-- Can you hear me? Okay. So we have a disciplinary matrix within the handbook, and we do ask schools to start off with responses to student misbehavior that are not suspendable. So we want, we want the schools to respond to misbehaviors and harassment and bullying, but do it in a way that they can respond and have the behavior change without having to suspend a student if possible. So this could be something as simple as consultation with a parent, parent conference, student conference. Those might be some logical starting points when a student has been accused of bullying another student, and they have been found to have done that.
So in plain words, methods that might have been used decades ago to deal with these type situations, they're out today. I mean, I, does that make sense, what I'm saying?
I wouldn't say they're completely out, but they're not necessarily the first thing that we go to. So I think this is the state's effort to wrap in where they're trying to avoid suspensions as much as possible, the exclusion of students from school, and still solve the problem. So I think this is where sometimes we run into challenges, where parents are concerned, why is that student still in this school? Why has that student not been removed? Why has that student not been punished more? I can't see what they've done to the student. And this is some of the restrictions that we work under, but also some of the guidance we work under. Suspensions don't work like they did years ago, when you got in trouble at home and you spent the day working, or cleaning the house, or whatever it might be. Now, that's not necessarily what happens with a lot of our students when they're suspended, so it doesn't have the same effect that it did at one time. So I think we make adjustments, and we try to find that common denominator, the common factor that solves the problem, is what we're after. We're trying to discipline students, we're not trying to punish students. But again, I can see from the eyes of a parent, that child bullied my son or daughter, why haven't they been removed? Why haven't they been thrown out? Why haven't they been sent to Antietam Academy? Why are they still in the school system? The model policy helps guide some of that, and what we're looking at. And again, we're not looking to punish students, we're looking to discipline students and change behavior.
And a lot of what you'll see in the model policy, in terms of what you're talking about there, it really is in our regulation, and it's not in the policy. The policy talks about that there, you know, may be consequences, and then we dive into it differently. Dr. Zemire, are you had your hand raised?
Well, two of the alternatives that are mentioned somewhere in here are trauma-informed response and restorative practices. Are our administrators now able to use those two things in the school?
Legally, yes, but you may want to speak a little more to that.
So we provide, we've been providing the last, at least the last two years, to teachers and school staff, the trauma-informed training. So we have a large number of school staff that have that training, that's training specifically for school staff. As far as--
Do the schools probably have someone trained in both of those programs?
That's correct. Well, we have, as far as restorative practices, that's something that we did start about two years ago. We do have, I don't have the exact count in my head, but we have five or six schools that are kind of leading the effort with that particular training and making sure that all staff in the building. One of the instrumental things with restorative practices is that all staff members in the building really need to be trained in order for that to run effectively. So we have probably, at this point, five or six schools that have taken a pretty strong lead with that, and we have many others that have some staff trained, but not entire staff. So that's, our implementation plan for restorative practices is like a five-year implementation plan. We're in year three.
So, but who decides whether or not we use exclusionary?
That comes down to the assistant principal in the building.
And I just want to know, what happens if a student continues that behavior? What, how, and this is going to, I'll just say, how many chances do you give a student? How many times, how many different programs do you have to work through before you say, "This student's not responding"?
Yeah, so we do, I mean, we utilize progressive discipline. So if students are repeat offenders with a different victim, then usually the administrators will use progressive discipline. So if there was an incident and the outcome to that was conference with parent, and then two months later, different incident with a different victim, it may no longer be parent conference, it may be parent conference with some other type of counseling support provided to that student. I also like to say that the model policy from the state, they did gather input from local school systems over the past nine months, and they had a conversation with us. The one part that's in the model policy's been in our regulation, I think since February 2020, and that's the follow-up with, with, after a report is made and the investigation's complete. We had within our regulation a follow-up in two weeks with the victim to make sure that the harassment has ceased. And then there's a six-week follow-up as well. Those are both reflected in the state model policy. I think they actually took that from us, which is great. So some of our best practices that we put in place within the last two years, it's nice to see that they're reflected within the state model policy.
Mr. Gassford?
So just so I'm clear, we're being, are we being consistent from school to school on this, this, when high school starts a bullying, there's an action taken? Take the example, Smithburg. So then if Williamsport, that same disciplinary action, or a student that started bullying issue, same mix of it, is consistent from one school to the other, depending on elementary, middle, and high, and it's probably very near, but so that we're all on the same page? Because typically, in the workforce, it's a verbal communication. You know, the next one is a rhythm, the next one is suspension, the fourth one is permission. Do we have that spelled out?
I don't think it's that, it's not that tightly defined. For example, I think with, with an incident that occurs on the bus at the high school level, there's a pretty locked in, this is step one, this is step two, this is step three, but the--
The actual punishment I'm talking about, it's a gradual step, that everybody knows what's going to happen next. So that we're, if you're a principal and I'm a principal, and we're all on the first step, we're going to do the exact same thing. Is that happening?
Yeah, I think there is consistency with, number one, making the forms available, number two, making sure that when a form is submitted, that there is an investigation, and that schools are required to use the adopted investigation forms that we have. I think that helps to ensure consistency from school to school.
I think, Mr. Jacoby, what Mr. Gassford's asking, will the same discipline be administered? And I don't necessarily think that will be the case. I think the same process, complete the paperwork, submit the paperwork, investigations conducted, a two-week follow-up, a follow-up after that, all those pieces are consistent if the bullying and harassment paperwork is submitted. But I think what Mr. Gassford might, I just want to be clear that we've responded to the right question.
Yeah.
Will those two principals take exactly the same action on the very first offense of something determined to be bullying? I'm going to guess that the answer that might not be exactly the same, because circumstances are different.
I think that--
I just want to be sure we answered the right question, Mr. Gassford.
I think there's discretion. It's a school level. The action may not look identical, but every case of harassment and bullying is very different. So I think they have to take that into consideration when they think about, when an incident occurs and it's determined to have occurred, you know, as far as a form of bullying, harassment, the administrators are making that decision. I think there's a certain level of probably variability, where they may take different actions on the first incident. One, I mean, one school may consult with parent, consult with student, and that would be the end. Another school may do that conference with parent and recommend counseling services, but--
Okay, if I can briefly respond, the other thing that is a little bit more problematic when you look at our policy versus the model policy, from the school standpoint, or even the parent or student, bullying, harassment, intimidation was all lumped together, right? But we do know that there are three separate definitions. So in response to, also, what happens? What's the next step? Well, I hate to put it this way, but if someone's bullying versus intimidation, and there's different actions, you have an administrator trying to figure out, well, which is it? How do I know what's appropriate? So this model policy really spends some time explaining that bullying, cyberbullying, harassment, intimidation are separate, and here's clearer definitions to really help navigate that, because oftentimes, the consequence, for lack of a better word, is different depending on the type of situation. And so to make it easier to administer and be able to have the parent, as well as the student, and the administrator be able to navigate this process easier.
Dr. Zemire?
The state policy, when it talks about cyberbullying, it says on or off school property, and we differentiate, I think, between our equipment off property.
And that's in the model language. There's a big difference. If it's on our equipment, and we own the technology, and the student has taken it home, even if it's not on school grounds, it's still utilizing school technology, and the student can be responsible for committing any acts of cyberbullying. But for example, I always do this, I hold up a cellphone, right? School doesn't own the cellphone, parent, maybe student owns a cellphone. If I'm on school grounds, and I'm committing cyberbullying, and I can see the tag on the Instagram post, I can see this happen during the school day. But if this happens outside of school, doesn't reference a school event, to say, in, you know, some restaurant or store somewhere, and it's being posted, we really have no way of a school district to regulate that unless we're made aware of it. So there have been times in our district where a principal is made aware, I'll use Instagram again, because this is the one I'm familiar with, where a principal is made aware that students are posting bullying comments about other students. And so while we, if tapping off school grounds, the principals are still concerned, they're checking those Instagram accounts, provided they're not private, the reporting is bullying. Depending on the situation, if it carries into school, the principal will step in. But a lot of that, that doesn't happen on our devices, we don't know what's happening. We can't monitor all social media for every student 24/7, but we're doing the best we can to ensure a safe learning environment for our students.
But if a student takes a screenshot of the bullying and turns it into the assistant principal, then we address it with restorative practices or whatever?
We may, but I, it needs to happen, there has to be this causal connection to school, right? There's a recent Supreme Court case about that, but it has to be a connection. So we know that if I take, if I'm a student and I take my Chromebook home, and I'm-- So, we know that if I take, if I'm a student and I take my Chromebook home and I'm bullying and there's a screenshot, or we have a way of tracking down the IP address, or we know what's happening on a school device, or through Google Classroom message, or some other device, that's school-owned property and there's an acceptable technology policy that says, "Hey, student, you cannot be doing that."
That's clear-cut.
That's clear. Let me tell you, personally-owned cellphones, not as clear-cut. It's a little bit more gray. Now, if it's happening, so, if we know, so, say, a student is wearing some sort of jersey or Washington County Public Schools, or some school's logo on them, and they're holding themselves out as a, you know, a student here, and they're bullying another student, and we know about it, you know, that's something we can get involved in. But when there's no connection to school, or school event, or activity, or club, it's a little bit gray area.
Mrs. Ram, the state has clearly made some changes with regard to definitions, and in particular, bullying. Bullying is something that we hear often in describing one student's behavior towards another, or an adult's behavior towards another adult. Could we focus, please, on those definitions and how they have changed and what exactly they mean for administrators or people in our schools who are working with students?
Really, the biggest, broadest difference is that it now applies to any person on school property. So, if you have two parents at a football game and they, one parent is bullying the other, there's a position of power, there's harassment or intimidation, or threatening conduct. Well, obviously, we don't have disciplinary for parents, right? But we can remove them because they're in violation of our policy. And when you're on our grounds, you have to follow our policy. So, that's the biggest change. It really breaks it out. Bullying, the change, our former policy, the, what's struck out, lumps bullying, harassment, intimidation together, and specifically cites annotated code. I mean, it's all, it's all legal words. And so, really, the change is, it puts it into plain speak to explain that it's unwanted demeaning behavior among students. And again, also applies to persons on school property that involve a real or perceived power imbalance. What hasn't changed is there still needs to be intentional and repetition. So, a one-time incident is really not bullying, but it does need to be repeated and there needs to be, but by saying implied, or in fact, of an imbalance of power, feeling that there's nothing you can do to stop this, it's going to, as unwanted and repetitious, bullying is going to keep happening. And it's sometimes picking on another student, teasing, tormenting, threatening another student. That's really what has changed. And it can be physical, emotional, academic, threatening of harm. It doesn't have to be shoving someone in a locker. I don't even know if that happens anymore, but shoving someone in a locker. And, but that's another reason they broke out cyberbullying from the other definition of bullying. We are seeing a lot more cyberbullying happen than in-person bullying. And so, they really wanted to break that out, to have a clear understanding and definition of that.
Mr. Evans, you had a question?
Yeah, and I think you actually just kind of answered that there. I have a little bit of a concern about the use of the word "and" in that bullying definition there, where it says an imbalance of power and then to repetition. Like, like you said, you know, I'm sure, I mean, I think the lockers are too small to even fit someone in, if you want to, anyway. But to use that example, I think most people would agree that the first time that happens, that's bullying. And I don't think we would need to even check to see if it's repetitive or likely to happen. That is bullying, at least in my opinion, but I know there's legal aspect to this as well. So, I do wonder about that. But I also worry about the part in that definition where it says it's highly likely to be repeated. I worry that that gets a little subjective, especially when we go back and look at the next part where, and I don't know if these are considered to be two separate things or not in the policy, but when you look at the harassment part and negative actions that offend, and, you know, let's be real, if I breathe wrong, I'm probably offending someone today, you know? I mean, that gets to be a little subjective. And I think I read in the memo or whatever from the state that it pretty much said that we have to at least have those definitions. But, I don't know, that was a concern of mine. I don't know if there's really a question there, but-
There is. I heard several questions, and so, I have some responses. I guess really, my locker example probably would be intimidation if it's a one-time incident, because it would fall under that definition. The "and" under bullying is required. We can't change that to an "or". That is a legal standard, the "and". Both have to occur. There's elements that we have to meet, and that's in the annotated code. And then, that's why they do break out. And harassment also, I hear what you're saying about sometimes looking at someone funny or breathing wrong. And that's in the harassment definition. It really, it's meant to do with race, ethnicity, national origin, immigration status, and the rest of the list. And again, that's also set by law. We are required to have that. We have it in another policy that talks about our anti-discrimination policies. So, those are, certain parameters are required to be in there. And really, we don't want discrimination on any level. So, I appreciate where it's subjective, and that's why we have the report forms, and that's why staff have to step in and kind of navigate this. And that's really the need for the change in definitions, to help staff navigate the complexity of this. And it does continue to evolve and become more complex, to your point.
Right.
I think too, I think the state's trying to get definitions that are consistent across county to county, and what we're calling bullying, what we're calling intimidation, harassment, whatever. It doesn't mean that on the first action of something, it might not get labeled bullying or intimidation, but it might require a consequence. You know what I mean? It's a difference, it's not like a freebie. So, the first time you do it, there'll be no consequence. The second time you do it, now it's repetitive. Now, we're putting the label on it, now you get consequences. There could be consequences for the first thing you do. We just might not put a state label of bullying, harassment, intimidation on it if it's not repetitive. That's kind of how I see some of that. But it doesn't mean everybody gets to walk up and do whatever they want, and there's no consequences for a first offense. It's just how the state is labeling these things, because they're collecting this data statewide. So, that's, we're trying to be consistent with some of this, I think. And I think that's part of the reason for the state definitions.
And that's why there's model policy forms as well, because when we are submitting that, Mr. Jacoby can speak to that more than I can, but when we're reporting it, you know, the way to enter the fields on, you look at the forms, and they're, the state's looking for specific data. So, if every district is using this model form, then they're receiving the data, for the most part, cleanly and uniformly.
Mr. Stalfer?
There's probably a question for Mr. Jacoby. We've heard it said many times that the student who is bullied ends up getting their schedule changed, or, you know, this type of thing. And that seems to be, in a way, a sort of consequence or punishment for those students. Can you discuss that with us, or talk about that issue a little bit? I mean-
Yeah, I would say that it's probably more common that the perpetrator that's found guilty of bullying and harassing, if they share a class with the student, the victim, it's probably more common that, that the person that's doing the misbehavior might have their schedule changed. That could be part of the sanction that the assistant principal provides. We also have, I mean, we have other circumstances that arise with the victim where the victim's parents will ask to have their child's schedule changed. So, I think it's very case-by-case as the administrators are investigating these. But I think more common, more common that the individual that has been doing the harassment or the bullying may indeed have their schedule changed if they, if they have a class with the victim.
But we've heard that many times, that the person who's bullied gets changed. We've heard that in discussion before this board, in public comment and stuff, that that was the case. So, you're saying that's more frequently the perpetrator who does that, who gets that change?
Yeah, the person that's doing the bullying is more likely to have their schedule changed. And that, that could be part of the administrative response with these, especially if the two students have a shared class.
Because I was under the assumption that, you know, that's something that's done a lot of times, that the kid who's bullied gets changed. And so, I'm glad you corrected that, if that's so. Thank you.
Mr. Gupta?
I just had a question. So, something that happens, I think, in high school, like somewhat frequent amount is fights. Would fights fall under bullying, harassment, intimidation, or is that a separate policy?
Well, I unfortunately have to give you my lawyer answer. It depends, because it really does depend on the circumstances unique to that fight. I can't lump all fights into it. I, if, if it is a bullying, harassment, intimidation, and then, you know, a student fights back and it turns into a fight, it could fall under that. If it's something completely different, so, there's always potential crossover. I can't, I can't give a concrete answer on that.
I think it's possible that if during the investigation of a fight, one of the individuals is claiming that they've been bullied for four weeks, the administrator should provide them with a reporting form. It's a good way to gather additional information, to understand the root cause of the fight, an opportunity to talk with perhaps witnesses that would not have otherwise been brought up as part of the fighting incident.
So, let's say there's a case in which it's decided that bullying is the root cause. And one thing I've heard a lot from students is that they're told that if you fight back during a fight, then you are also at fault. So, is that true? Or like, how does that, who's the perpetrator in that case?
That's a good question. Usually, with a fight, there's usually one person that probably is more likely the aggressor than the other individual. Sometimes not, but usually during a fight, there's usually one student that is more of the aggressor than the other. So, would administrators investigate those circumstances? They can use their discretion and provide a more heightened consequence for the individual that perhaps was waiting outside the other student's classroom. And when the other student came out, the student got attacked, and then that led into more of a mutual fight. So, administrators can use their discretion. If they have, clearly have information that one student was, was the aggressor, and they took additional steps to confront the other student, then the sanctions may indeed be slightly different.
So, in that case, would the other student, the one who got attacked, still be punished?
It depends on the particulars of the investigation, but if they participated in the fight, there were injuries, they may, they may have sanctions. We also have, when we're investigating these types of incidents, it's really the difference between trying to figure out, is this a fight where two students are engaged physically, or is this an attack, which is more one-sided? So, if they, you know, maybe there's a review of film. If it's in, you know, if it's clear that it was more of an attack, it was one-sided, then probably the student that was attacked would not have any consequences.
Thank you.
Mrs. Ram, I have a couple of questions, and I'm going to be moving between the board's policy, JFH, and the state's model policy. So, looking at the board's policy on page two of three, under Roman numeral four, Policy Statement and Procedures, D, Reporting Procedures, all of that is struck. And my question, and my assumption is, that that's because that's going to appear in regulation. So, my question then becomes, the board has to have its policy in alignment with the state policy. When I look at the state policy, there is a great deal that deals with reporting, there are sample forms. Does it follow, then, that the superintendent's written regulations will adhere to what is here at a minimum and can then go beyond what's here with regard to procedures and process and forms?
That's a very correct assumption. Striking, consistent with how we have our other policies, in all the reviews we've been doing since I've been with the district, looking at form and content, anything that's more appropriate in regulation, we have been removing from the policy and moving into regulation. So, you are correct in that assumption, that we are removing that from policy and this suggestion to move it to regulation. And then, yes, in the superintendent's regulation, when the updates, and a lot of what's in here is already in our regulation, but at a minimum, yes, the model policies, excuse me, the model forms and the content regulation from the state model policy at a minimum will be in our regulation, if not more tailored to our specific district. So, there was duplication, and I looked, I didn't bring the regulation because it's not a board action item. But if I, when I looked at the regulation, a lot of what is struck is already in our regulation.
Okay, so, my next question is, often, the board, due to legislation or due to something that comes out of the state board, the board needs to create a policy and submit it for approval. Will this review and revision that takes place have to be submitted to the state for its approval?
That's correct.
And does it also follow that the superintendent's regulations go to the state for the state's approval? Or is it only the board's policy?
It's only the board's policy, but the regulation does need to be submitted, or basically a link to where the state superintendent can view it. But yes, it has to be done by February 15th is the deadline to have the board pass it, or at least it's in process, give an explanation as to why. And then, we do have to submit a link to the board policy. So, the updates have been made.
So, at the beginning of our session, you mentioned the distinction between policy and regulation. And you mentioned that the superintendent's regulation does not need formal action by the board. It's been my understanding that the only time the board can really take exception to something that the superintendent has in regulation is if there's a question about alignment, that a board member may find an issue and feel that something in the superintendent's written regulation does not align with something in the policy. That's correct, right?
That is correct, and does not require a board action.
Okay.
That's when their communication can be sent to the superintendent, that the board member does not believe the regulation is in alignment with policy, and can the superintendent look into that and evaluate that and respond to them, much like when other, when board members at any time have a question about district operations. They can email the superintendent and ask those questions, and the superintendent will look into it and respond. And if there's a question or concern, the superintendent can make the decision of how to proceed with what changes may or may not need to be made.
Thank you. Any other questions, colleagues? No? Did you have more for us, or?
I, they did put up the slide on bullying prevention, reporting, response, in case there was questions about what our process and procedure is, it will be part of the regulation. But that is the bulk of the material I had for you today. The next steps are that when the policy committee meets next, the proposed changes to policy JFH will be discussed, so we can continue on making certain we're in alignment with the February 15th date. So, that will be discussed at the next policy committee.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Stalfer?
Do we find sometimes, or ever find in an investigation of bullying incidents, that teachers observed these incidents and never did anything about them? We've heard, I've heard that from people, that teachers just let it go on. Mr. Jacoby, can you comment on that, or give us some insight into that?
What, I guess what I can share with you is, from time to time, we will have parents that will call in here to the central office, and they typically talk with Ms. Hoffer in school counseling when they have concerns about the way that an investigation was completed. And we work with the parent through those concerns. I don't, I can't recall of an incident or a report in the recent past where a parent claimed that there was a staff member that witnessed or was aware of harassment that was occurring, and they did not do what they were supposed to do, which, of course, is reporting that to the administration and/or working with the student to make a formal complaint on the matter.
Well, you read that on social media sometimes. Some of the parents get to talking, and it comes across my news feed. I never comment or anything, but I just wondered.
Yeah, and, you know, every year, we, we provide teachers and school staff with professional development prior to the start of every school year to try to make sure that we prevent and avoid what you're talking about, so that the school staff understands what their responsibility is. what their responsibility is.
Can we totally stop bullying? I mean, sometimes I get the idea that parents expect us to be bully-free, and I'm not, I'm opposed, you know, I don't want to see any bullying, but at some point, you know, we can't stop everything. I wish we could, but how do we respond to something like that?
So that's a question. So I, I think we can-
Do you have a comment? It's not a question? What are you talking about?
Yeah, I think, I mean, if you would, if you would ask the same question about, can we stop fighting in schools, or any other type of misbehavior that unfortunately occurs in our school settings, I, I think the clear answer is no, we can't prevent it or end it permanently. What we can do is, I think we can reduce or minimize the amount that's happening. We can enhance our professional development with both staff and students to try to help be more preventative. We can, we can take a look at our programs, such as PBIS and other programs that are in our schools, and try to strengthen those programs so that the ultimate outcome is that, that we have a reduction in these numbers.
And I think also that the change in language makes it cleaner and easier for educating students as well as teachers and administrators, and really understanding, it's less complicated. When you put things in plain English, sometimes the message comes across differently, but as you follow the case law, there's, there's always cases that involve school district liability in bullying, and the courts routinely fall on the side of the school, saying the school, in some instances, while they can prevent it if they're made aware of it, if the school is not on notice, they can't stop something they don't have actual or perceived knowledge of.
Colleagues, any other questions? Mr. Vicford is policy chairman. Did you have anything that you wanted to, to offer with regard to next steps, what happens?
The only thing that I was thinking about is that policy committee will be anxious to hear from, we got, we got to hear from staff today. It would be wonderful to hear from members of the public, even WCTA and others, just to get way in on the state of current policy and where you'd like to see some changes. That would certainly help with the discussion in committee. Next step, it'll, this will come up on the agenda. We are under time. We have to get this passed by the end of, they're somewhat forgiving as long as-
February 15th.
Yeah, by the end of February, correct. So this will be on our next agenda, which is next-
January 25th.
Yeah, very good. So, and that'll be an open meeting as well. And then we have scheduled another meeting in early February. It'll come up for first read hopefully in February. That's the plan currently, and then we would get feedback and hopefully be able to respond to that feedback in order to meet our deadline. But we also have been told that as long as you're making a good effort to meet the deadline, they, they can be forgiving if, if we get a multitude of comments and need more time.
Thank you. So colleagues, if there's nothing further. Staff, thank you all for being here, for, for taking your questions. Mrs. Ram, thank you very much. And colleagues, did you find this helpful? Did you find this session helpful?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. So we will be meeting, we'll take a brief recess and meet in open session and then go into closed session and, let's say, in the next 10 minutes, we'll plan to begin that. Okay, thank you.